And to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, Mr. McCullough, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Seminero, here. Mrs. Hamel.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz. Mr. McCullough, here. Mr. McGlocken.
Here.
Mr. Potts. Here. Mr. Shune.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
And Mr. Basil.
Here. Okay, we're gonna go through the special voting meeting first. Are there any edits to that particular agenda? None. All right. Procedures for public participation are on the inside jacket of the blue cover of your, of the agenda. You have to be a citizen of the, of the district. You approach the microphone, you state your name, your, your address, and then you have three minutes to address the board. Having said that, do we have any public participation on agenda items for the special voting meeting?
Perry, tell them, look, 2034 East Manchester, double the vote. One thing I did not like to speak today, is that everyone that is speaking and seeing please have a microphone in front of them, so I can hear, I am the tax paid resident, and I do want to hear what's going on on this stage. I'm sitting right here, these people in the back, that's fine, honestly, my guy, keep your hand up, say, this meeting, you can change it from meeting to agenda.
Perry, Perry, one second. Is, is this comment about the, the item on here, which is the head coach?
That online hearing what you're saying.
Okay, we got it.
And that's the scene.
Okay.
The next meeting, who's second to me?
Perry, we'll take public comment about other items later.
The agenda item, I have to include the agenda item.
Well, this is not on the agenda for what we're talking about right now. We're talking about, we're gonna be voting on, one second, we're gonna be voting on the head coach for the football team. That's what we're talking about right now.
Okay.
That's the special voting meeting. You wanna come up after this, as it's closed, and we're on to other items?
All right.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on agenda items?
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't hear what the meeting was about, in the beginning, that's why I came on down.
Okay. If there's no other comments, uh, from the public, okay.
Shane Arnold, 83, there, Conover, um, the new football coach, uh, he doesn't have any, um, children in the football program. He's, uh, his kids are on the beat.
I don't know what that has to do with, I, I have no idea whether he has kids in the school district or not, or whether his kids are in the program, and I'm not sure what bearing that has.
I was informed that he does, and I think it's, I think it's a great thing, and it's something that the school district should go into a policy, that parents of the families should really pay the coach, maybe volunteer, but I do appreciate looking outside of, uh, this, actually, I'm outside of school, I, I was only as probably as I'm a hundred percent, but.
That's correct.
I do appreciate, uh, looking outside of the family of the families in our school district.
Thank you for your comments. Any other comments? Okay, um, seeing none, we'll move on. Personnel approvals. It's recommended the board of directors approve the following appointments extracurricular: William Parks, head football coach, at $5,900, effective April 17th, 2012. Okay? Second. Any discussion by the board?
The statement is in line with the.
Yes.
Contract. Actually, if this statement is in line with what the parking agreement.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, seeing none, can we get a roll call vote?
Mr. Seminero. Yes. Mrs. Hamel.
Yes.
Mr. McCullough, yes. Mr. McGlocken.
Yes.
Mr. Potts.
Yes.
Mr. Shune.
Yes.
Mr. Wolf.
Yes.
And Mr. Basil.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Pe, Mr. Templeton, if you'd like to approach the board.
As I was saying, I'd like to hear what's coming off the stage tonight. Last board meeting, I, the agenda, there was a adjournment, everyone was sitting here, didn't even know the adjournment, I just thought I heard it, I didn't hear a second, and then here, the, uh, question call, who had seconded the adjournment in the last board meeting?
I have to take a look at the minutes, I believe, and we actually haven't approved the minutes yet, so, um, I think Mr. Seminero made the motion, I think Mr. McGlocken was second in the motion, I can't recall exactly.
There was a figure?
Huh?
There was a figure?
No, you don't have to have a first and second.
Oh, okay. Well, then, in the end of this, could you, in spite, add to this, uh, agenda meeting, take out agenda funding, maybe have this all loose, as a different trait, because you were assessed to the head of the factors, what, that being, I'm sorry to say, that was poor, there was a wrong thing I have seen in my entire time, from the board meetings. This man was here, therefore, was not a visiting on the couch, or, 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 but he was stood on this, on the forefront of this problem we had here, was writing the music, and he was not treated very well, and I'm, I'm ashamed of seeing the way he was treated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'd like to introduce him, he's here.
What's that?
Do you mind if I introduce him, he's here.
Yeah, absolutely. Just, uh, we asked, he agreed to come out tonight, I would like to welcome to the, um, district, he is actually here in the audience tonight, who will be taking over the, uh, football program for Mr. Bedolus. Appreciate you taking the time to come out, and just would like to wish you, uh, well with the program. I know the, the kids and the parents are excited about, uh, getting the program running again.
Thank you, I just want to talk myself, and thank the board and the school for the opportunity, and I'm excited to work with the kids tomorrow.
Great, thank you. And that's it. We got a motion to close this.
Second.
Okay.
Listen, please, can I have one minute by your point?
Yeah. Slight recess. Again, in terms of announcements, uh, we have a couple of edits to the committee of the whole agenda. Nine A, one A, Tina McMullen, changed, we changed the date of her resignation from April 23rd to April 13th. Nine B, two B, the same change is made there, that's changed to April 13th, 2012. Eleven W, policy 110.1 should read "new," not revised. Um, there will also be an executive session after this meeting to discuss personnel, and sounds like litigation as well. Um, procedures for public participation are the same, uh, they're on the inside blue cover of the agenda, you have to be a resident of the district, you have your three minutes to address the board, and please state your name and address. Having said that, we'll take public comment on the committee of the whole agenda. Okay? If there's no public comment, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Basil, good evening, good evening, everyone, and welcome on this unusually warm April evening. We'd like to start off, since we're going to be, just a, a note, we'll be at the, um, Burke's Career and Technology Center, every so often we go out to visit with them, so our voting meeting next week will be in Ole. So tonight, we have a couple of recognitions that we would have normally done next week, so we're gonna do them tonight. So I'm gonna have Mrs. Trainer, who, um, helps me out with these, we have, uh, a teacher that we'd like to recognize for quite an honor, and a student who did a very wonderful thing that I actually was able to witness, so we'll take each one of them at a time here, and I'll turn it over to Mrs. Trainer.
Thank you. Um, who are to pass, um, one as a member of the district, and secondly, as a member of the executive board of junior achievement, and ask, um, Mr. Bailey. Mr. Bailey was, um, recognized by Junior Achievement of Oregon, Lake County, this year as the Junior Teacher of the Year, and was formally recognized on May 5th at our national, our, excuse me, our annual, um, honor hall of fame dinner, and so, how, Jeff, if you don't know, personally, he's a high school, 12th grade economics and P O D teacher, and has served in that capacity for us for a number of years. But Junior Achievement, if you aren't familiar with Junior Achievement, it's a national program that tries to take real world applications of economics, which is often very difficult for students to understand, um, thinking, well, we all learned in high school and college, and maybe even full-time schools, and even as low as junior art, where we have programs running. And so, when Junior Achievement came out with a new program, Jeff was my coaching person, a number of years ago, and, um, I started out by saying, who I would do for you, and the deal was, I have this great program that has a number of bankers, credit reps, execs from CarTech, a career Navy individual who is now retired, who would be glad to come in and bring their real world experience in when you were doing certain concepts, compliments of a curriculum which is tied to standards that Junior Achievement offers. And so, Jeff embraced it, did lots of extensions with it, and then he actually opened other programs for kindergarten, first and second grade, and, I guess, career degree. Jeff, like, trained his students in K1 and 2 programs, and actually took his seniors back to the elementary school, and they gave that program, and four of our minds during the year, they taught kindergarten, first and second grade students, actually relating with even their own high school students, and talked about economic concepts. I think it was as much a learning experience for the high school students as it was for the elementary students, because we took it far beyond just that economics piece. And it has been now the established part of Jeff's program, I have studied on some of the classes, they learn about, um, you know, fraud, credit, savings accounts, mortgages, loans, identity theft, from folks who deal with it day in and day out, making meaningful high school seniors. He has, by far, in our county, been the most supportive, uh, teacher over the years, and so I was certainly proud of that, and had a vote, um, in the nominee called Jeff, that was done by folks who are out on the field, but I certainly was very honored to be able to have him be voted in, and recognized. At the May 5th dinner, I'll take a little bit further, we had nine of our high school students there as coaches and supporters of the program, and Mrs. Hamel's daughter, uh, who was one of them, got to meet Mr. Bailey, and in turn is now the author of the article that will appear in the district newsletter, and will make its way onto our website. So, just take us a little bit further, so, I'm gonna congratulate him first.
We also have another certificate for you as well, Jeff.
The second young man I want to ask to join the podium is Christian Mars. Christian's a very special ambassador for the animal rescue league, and I'll start the story, and then I'll let Christian share a little bit of the background, but Christian learned about a little puppy, uh, who, unfortunately, being a puppy, had a couple of accidents, and his owner wasn't happy, um, very unhappy with him, and it's really not nice things to the dog, including breaking one of his legs, and so, through some president's animal rescue league got out about him, and brought the dog to the animal rescue league, Christian found out about it, and came into school, and asked whether or not, first of all, the center could do a fundraiser to help pay for the medical bills for Donovan. And so, he actually joined council, and that was his mission, and I think last time I saw on the website this weekend, you were influential in helping raise a thousand twenty dollars, did you also say? It did, what's it now? You don't remember, you raised a thousand eighty dollars.
He's not worried about budget.
And also, because of his involvement, uh, the Wednesday before the holiday break, animal rescue league came to First Road Elementary Center, and actually brought the, um, special animal, Diamond, with them, who was walking out on wolf or legs, and they brought smaller animals, and it was also an opportunity that they could share with the population what they do, um, the different types of animals they have, how they care for them, how people can get involved, volunteer, and so, not only was Christian able to help Diamond, and also see Diamond personally, for the first time, and got to hold him, but also to bring some probably very new knowledge to a lot of people who didn't know a lot about the animal rescue league. But would you like to share? So, there's one lucky puppy, um, first of all, because he was rescued, and they, we will make a full recovery, he go through, he saw, and that was the first time that the students or Christian actually got to see Diamond, when they arrived at First Road that day. So, he's gonna stay at the center for a while, and I believe that they actually had somebody who potentially would be, um, in taking the dog once the dog was healthy, and it would be adopted by a family, but that was all based on this young man's initiative, company suggested, so he did an awful lot, who is an ambassador of the district and the First Road Elementary Center, and deserves, certainly, compliments from us for all that hard work, congratulations. He might be able to be consulted for his career. I think he's the graduation, thank you.
I can actually just make a, a small comment. I mean, a lot of times, we go through this as a board, in, in this section of our meetings, and I just wanna say that, and I, I mentioned this to Christian, every single person can make a difference, Christian has obviously made a huge impact, not only that puppy's life, but I think on his entire school, and his class, and, uh, Mr. Bailey, the same, uh, you've obviously had a, a large impact on your students, and, uh, it's been recognized, but obviously, people can't say enough, and thank you enough for the hard work, so.
I would echo that as well, unfortunately, unfortunately, sometimes in our world, we're a little short on kindness and compassion, and, um, what that young man did, I think, gives you faith for, um, our, our youth. So, moving forward, um, just a brief update on our school activities, um, our spring athletic activities and other activities are in full swing, um, always a nice sound to the students, is that we're in the fourth academic period, so that means summer's not far away, although by the weather, you'd never know. Um, we also received notification over the weekend, uh, that one of our Odyssey of the Mind teams from AIC actually qualified for the national competition in Iowa, so we'll have a little bit more detail on that, that's just breaking news. I do wanna, uh, bring back an important issue that we've been dealing with as a follow-up to the issues at the high school, with the racial harassment and threats made last month, uh, I can say we've moved forward in a positive manner with the, uh, the process of establishing an ad hoc, um, diversity committee. If you hadn't had a chance to see, we put pretty much a, a full advertisement out for volunteer members for that. The request period, uh, for those volunteers ended this past Friday, uh, and we will begin assembling the committee this week. Um, I'm, I'm happy to say, again, um, by the response, again, gives me renewed faith that people wanna help with this, uh, we had a great response from most of the groups that we are including on the committee, and would like to mention to the board that we are looking for a school board representative, and you can kinda let me know who will fulfill that role. But we are, uh, planning to start organizing meetings, uh, we've, um, reached out to some outside consultants and other resources to help us, uh, get started in the process, and at this point, uh, we anticipate having our first meeting sometime in the first week in May. So it's been a very trying time, uh, obviously, you've all been following that very closely. Again, I'm, I'm very confident that we can take something with this, and, and, and take a problem and turn it into an opportunity. That concludes my report.
Okay, so board members, um, think about if you wanna serve on this diversity committee, I think there's only a spot for one board member, but, uh, think about it, we can either, you can either submit your names to me, or quite frankly, we just, you just put him to Dr. Otto, and, uh, he'll be running the committee, and, and he'll be the one making the selection, and we'll move it forward, okay? Curriculum instruction, Mr. Wolf, do you have anything you wanna add to that?
We're gonna, we're gonna meet, first.
Can you give me a public comment? It's after.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. No, it's this thing. We're gonna meet the, the, on a regular date in May now, um, we've got a number of stuff, something to talk about, so we'll meet again.
Okay.
About the budget.
Yep. Okay. Um, any comment from board members on any of those items we just discussed? Okay, any comment from the public on the superintendent's report, or curriculum instruction? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Under buildings and grounds, uh, we're asking you to, this is kind of a little bit of a, I've never seen this before, but we did clear this with Mr. Subers, we're going to ask for the transfer of, um, we have in our possession, a 1955 International 300 tractor, and we're looking to exchange that for a 1986 Ford bucket truck, as brought forward by Mr. Smith, and endorsed by me as well. I know Mr. Smith is here, um, it's being offered up to us to enter into this agreement by a district employee, we have run it by Mr. Subers, there are no legal issues with it. If anyone has any questions about it, it's, it's, there's no cost factor involved, Mr. Smith is here, if anyone has any questions.
I have questions about the training and qualifications to use a bucket truck.
Kenny, can we?
Yeah.
The training and qualifications needed to operate that?
So is there training and qualifications required to operate the bucket truck, and what liabilities will we have as, as a school board? I'll check the prior students on that, but, um, we have it right now, for, we're not training on that. Yeah, generally, there'll be training, there'll be, you know, harnesses required, and rescue requirements, and I would just ask you to make sure.
We'll have that before we vote on it next week, we'll get those questions answered. Okay, any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public on that issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to finance.
Okay, our first, uh, A, B, and C are your, your routine approvals, uh, which will be filled in for next week. Obviously, item D has been talked about, uh, the hard copy is at your seat, obviously, it's not required to take a vote this evening.
Well, why don't we, okay, go ahead through the rest of it.
Let me just finish it, yeah.
Okay.
Hash that. All right. Um, you also have an attachment, as submitted by Mrs. Trainer, for the district curriculum textbook budget, if there are any questions on that, we can entertain them now, and item F is a routine approval that will require board approval to assign Danielle, I guess Danielle, you have been doing that, correct?
Since inception.
Okay. So that concludes that. So, uh, Mr. Sheehan, would you, for benefit of Mr. Seminero, I don't think he was here when we had that discussion during the budget, uh, the BCTC budget issue, you had a question with?
I, I have concern, and, again, this, I think there's at least, Boyertown put it out last week, and I think I remember seeing one other, we have the budget in front of us, budget has, I had several, A, there's, and I think Mr. Wolf explained it, but, uh, the teacher staff doesn't, the professional staff doesn't have the option of taking a big, they take an average, we can confirm that, of the districts that participates, or if the average is 3%, the make it 3%. My other concern is, they're removing seven headcounts from their, their, uh, facility based upon furloughing math teachers, and the budget didn't go down. And, and I have a, a very, I mean, we're all finding things to move out of our budget, and I think it, I must feel like if they saw it as an opportunity to, to keep the seven headcounts worth of, of, of funds in their budget, therefore, our budget, our share didn't go down, and, and I don't plan on voting to pass this, uh, based solely on that, and we're all thinking, we just talked about eliminating municipal language, where our share of this could have saved part of that program, if, if they had lowered our share of, of, uh, budget, so. And we're gonna get some more further information, hopefully next week, probably voting on it, but, uh, that's my feeling.
You saw page four, though, in here, right, where it talks about salaries decreased 451,000.
Yeah, they also added other stuff in there, and I, and I did go through that, but, you know, again, you're, you're taking seven heads out on page four.
Yeah.
And they have that, that $451,000, same employee benefits went up, well, our employee benefits went up also, um, but then they're purchasing, you know, some other things, and, and I gotta believe that there are some other increases in the budget, otherwise, if you add them all, if, if you add up everything, if they, I, I just, just doesn't sit right, that's all.
Yeah, okay, I just wasn't sure if you saw that.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, they have a 0.69% decrease in land in the budget for the 451,000.
I mean, I think you're, you're, I think you're, you're on, I mean, like, on page six, they talk about 760, $762,000 decrease due to the seven teachers being furloughed. I guess the question then is, is what are they filling it back up with, 'cause they talk about increases of 325, um, to the Peasers, and then, um, I'm not sure why those numbers aren't jiving with what they have on page four, I guess it's the overall budget line item on page four versus?
Eight all the way down.
Yeah.
And they increased their plan of maintenance operations, they increased transportation, um, technology budget went up now almost 10% to 9%.
Yeah.
So again, I, I just, I, it just doesn't sit well, that, that we'll take a program out, and, or, or not.
It also means, if you look at the way that budget's constructed, that if they hadn't taken the seven, they would be increasing their budget by that much.
Right. I just.
I can get, I'll get background for you, I'll make a call to the BCTC tomorrow.
And, and, I, honestly, it doesn't matter where, or how they justify what you did, I'm gonna go, no, for some reason, it should have gone down, as should have our share of it, period.
Students come back, funds come back.
Right. You guys, we're gonna, we're now taking on the, the teaching of math, therefore, something should have come back at our end of the day, and, 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 very, very.
Any other comment from board members?
Quite frankly, if I had misinterpreted it, it was one thing, then I went and started looking at the other districts, and on Boyertown, board also saw something.
Yeah, look, no, no harm in, in getting some more information, that's for sure, I agree with you. Any public comment on this issue, or other issues under finance? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to personnel.
Items A, B, and C are routine approvals, which will expand as necessary. Item D, E, and F, for the benefit of those board members who have children graduating, and also with, uh, Mr. Connor, or with Mr. Kurtz, in his unique circumstance, it's the board's custom to, um, name temporary presidents for the sole purpose of signing off on diplomas. I believe, Mr. McCullough, you've done this before.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Wolf, this will be your first time, obviously, and Mr. Kurtz is in a very unique position, so.
Have we checked with Mr. Subers, I would hate to have somebody come down the road and say, you know what, he couldn't sign, I mean, I'm not denying him that option, but I would hate to have, have him get invalid diploma because of.
I can check, I, I don't, I'm not aware of any legal issue, but I'll serve.
I just wanna make sure, I mean, I don't wanna take that away from him, I think it's a great thing what he's doing, but I don't want it to, down the road, that someone says that he doesn't, decides to get a visa, and research, and find out, he's got an invalid diploma.
I would suspect, I would suspect that if we do it in a public meeting, we all voted for it, and we all agree to it, then he's, he's signing it as a board member, not as a student.
Again, I'm not, I just.
But I'm not in the interest.
Something happened down the road.
Yeah, you're right, you're right. It doesn't hurt to check.
Strange things happen.
Very rare.
Yes.
Any other comment, uh, do you wanna move on?
Oh, yes, um, items G, H, and I, obviously, are the resolutions, uh, based on our budgetary conversations, that will need action if we are going to access those items G, H, and I, as a point of, uh, revenue, or, excuse me, expenditure reduction.
Okay, can I, can I ask a question about this again? Can you re-splain me, if we vote yes, on the resolution, that means we accept vote, we can still vote no in June, correct?
On the budget.
On the budget.
You person, you, you basically wouldn't have to put a name to it, then?
No, no, what I'm saying is, we're just voting to accept back P, basically, this resolution is accepting PDE's approval to allow.
Correct.
Look at that.
Correct.
Okay, but if we don't, if we don't even get this, we can't even discuss it, basically, budget.
That's correct.
Okay. I'm, so I'm sure I'm clear. Okay. Okay. That's all. Just making sure I understand it, thank you.
Okay, any other comment from board members? Any comment from the public on those agenda items under number nine?
Bless you.
Bless you.
Shane Cockle, 33rd and 4th Avenue. I just wondered if you wanted to do that, they issued your cuts, you decided to cut foreign language. How does the post school have a level one, forcing, well, actually, they eliminated the opportunity for AP foreign language, where this is not a career. Nine graders this year are currently on a level two foreign language, so they can have a level five. You promised when you cut the foreign language gap, that you were introducing this, the new world language program, or in case to help them decide which one we want, which one we should do. So now, eliminating this, this is making me worried that you're eliminating the chance for level five. Now you're eliminating the, this program. What are you gonna do next year, you know, eliminating two-year, holding on for two years of foreign language, retract or eliminating programs? And maybe my school district, less enticing for people to come in, want an educational value. Granted, sports, people are going to go to our school district because of sports, we are eliminating the middle school program. What we're doing to our educational program is reckless, and I would ask not to review the world language then, along with the elementary band. I don't see anything unfair about the post school program in the sports, but as for the foreign language and the elementary band, I would seriously consider eliminating that. Thank you.
Mr. Cockle, just so you understand, the, we are required to respond to PDE, that's what these resolutions are. Either the affirmative, that we accept that they're allowing us to do these things, or the negative, that we don't accept their permission to do these things. And so by voting for these resolutions and sending our acceptance back to PDE, it keeps these options on the table as far as budget discussions going forward. Athletics, extracurricular activities, we don't have to go to PDE for their approval, so that's why those items aren't on here. It's not part of the, this is, this is part of a budget discussion, but it's not the complete budget discussion. I think what Mr. McCullough was trying to verify was that you can vote yes to this, send back to PDE that, yeah, we accept your recognition that we can modify, that we'll reduce these programs, but ultimately, the decision of whether these things are in or out on the budget has not been made. That will be made sometime in May or June.
Still out of the discretion of the board.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Mr. Trainer, is that correct, then? We cannot offer fifth-year AP foreign language?
Do they have to identify them by main school?
No, that's not...
No, 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 no. Was Mr. Cockle's point correct that we cannot offer AP foreign language then? Is that, because you can only do four years then, is that correct?
We have never offered an AP language, foreign language. We have had a level five, but we, it's an honor to support your development, I can give it a level four. But we have not in the past.
Okay, I'm just making sure. Okay, thank you.
Angela Snyder, Goldsboro. I just wanted to...
Could you just give us your address, please?
I'm sorry, 643rd Street, Goldsboro.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
It's my first time doing this.
No worries.
Rule is, I just wanna go along with Mr. Cockle and what he has to say. I understand what you just said as far as this being a resolution, giving you the options, but I would like to, you know, suppress my concern with these programs being eliminated. I mean, I went to school back in the seventies, and I had an elementary band program, and that allowed me to continue up through, I was eighth grade, I couldn't go on higher, but I had my reasons to not doing that. I really hate to see, I just really, concerned with me, that this could damage the band program, which is exceptional. Mrs. Bowman does an awesome, awesome job. I'm not that familiar with the family side of it. Mrs. McAdams and Mr. McAdams invest so much of themselves in this program, and I'm really afraid that eliminating the elementary band is going to hurt the program. I don't know how many kids are gonna wanna start an instrument in sixth grade. All my children have been in band, not at the high school level, all of them chose to do other things once they get high school level, especially based on what I've made out of choice. But I really do understand and would encourage serious thought about eliminating that program. The same thing with languages. Now granted, that one, I admit that I don't take one language to idolatize toward. However, you know, here we have these wonderful programs that allow them to, you know, allow students to get, you know, five years of, you know, language experience. To cut that back, it seems like they're going backwards in an environment where I really think we should be moving forwards, continuing to move forward, foreign language is an important part of that. So again, I would just encourage the board to seriously consider these things. I understand things have to be cut somewhere and all, but it just, those are two programs that just seem to need to be very needed in our research.
Thank you for your comments. And I welcome you to come to some of the budget meetings as well, where we actually discuss these issues at length. I don't think the board takes any of these issues lightly. We all understand that when you're cutting programming, there is an impact. However, as, as these programs might take a step backwards, our revenues have taken a step backwards as well, and quite frankly, it's just a function of numbers, so we're doing the best we can with the choices that we have. But I, you know, we welcome your participation at the budget meetings. Mr. Martino.
Mr. Martino, 25 West Moss Drive, I'm still, if I understand that the language program you're talking about eliminating, it's simply a try this one for size type program, it's a little bit of three different languages, which, which you don't do with any math or science or anything else, am I correct?
That's correct. That's as I understand it, yes.
So it's not like they're eliminating the language?
That's correct.
It's an experience. When Mrs. Trainer talked about class size, is that language better for like, I've heard you say, we're increasing class sizes in kindergarten through second grade, and I've heard the reasons we can eliminate class sizes in the middle school or high school. But I haven't heard much enough third, fourth, fifth grade, I'm wondering, against class sizes. I also believe I heard her say that if you do eliminate the language program, she's holding the job open to place that person in. Why would we hold the job open instead of eliminating those jobs over still $90,000 or $100,000 in the whole?
That job's not, the job, it, it's a vacancy that needs to be filled. It's not like it's an actual position. It's a vacancy that will, that is there, she has it because of the way certain people should put that person in that position.
Have we looked at third, fourth, and fifth grade scores increasing class levels?
We can have her...
The average class size in third, fourth, and fifth grade right now is between 26 and 27 students. 27 is the maximum you can fit into a, into any model classroom. I'm not decreasing A1 and 2 sizes. What I'm sure of the board is that we have a decrease in enrollment in kindergarten, and so the elimination of a position is merely an empty primary, just because of the decrease in the number of enrolled students for the 12th or 13th school.
I'm just curious, so that, what is the average class size in 22 to 24?
22 to 24, it's not small.
Thank you.
And I just, just as a point of clarification, I want to say also, the, the point where level five foreign languages was eliminated in this district, actually was in last year's decisions of the board making the budgets, by moving the first year of foreign language to ninth grade, it's not the current course that we have now. When the board chose to move level one of foreign languages, which used to offer an eighth grade, to become a solely education program, that's when the fourth year, we were senior year. So the impact of the decision you might make this year will not, is not affecting a lot of the population.
Okay, thank you.
Sharon Morris, 21st and 4th Street, Goldsboro. Sometimes you compare, you have to kind of each your own words, tell a Christian, and it only takes one voice to make a difference. Christian is a fifth grader, and he is also a kindergarten member. He has a brother in second grade who walks around and plays all over the place on the drum, on the piano, on the keyboard, it just tries to be the same thing to him. He has a one- and half-girl, no sister, no, sorry, good friend, sis. The band not only impacts the children in the school, but they have siblings that are watching. I mean, I understand the budget is tight, but it's looking so much to take in the love and the energy, like, when you walk by and hear them just feeding, like, laughing, and Mrs. Bowman's just, oh, so nice. Be really happy with the job. I just ask that, you know, something I'm just trying to let go of, you think, or this?
Thank you. Could you sign in, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, moving on.
Item 10, Mrs. Trainer, if you wouldn't mind coming back to the microphone here, for the benefit of the new board members and maybe for some of the, since this is your first time seeing some of these, it might be good to put some detail for these, so you understand what we're dealing with, with a lot of these different programs. Monthly enrollment, we don't need an explanation. The assessment, assessment test schedule, I think, speaks for itself, but maybe item C through about H there, Mrs. Trainer, you would like to speak to, just briefly?
Sure, but I just wanna go back, because I'm very happy to have a student in my school, and you're looking at that job, and you're saying, you know, as much as they didn't like it this year, my younger took PSSA, I'm gonna proceed on this sheet. And that is because there's a rule that are put that next year, a strong rule that should be decided by August, that the 11th grade PSSA test will not be considered next year, and it'll be a different format by the PDE for figuring your AYP status across the state in the way through the United States Department of Education to sanction the recommendation. So I chose not to put it on here, depending on whatever they might come up with, I can revise it if I have to, and include it on the grade call. So just occasionally throw that out there. Moving on now, under that each year, I work with a number of staff that because courses are updated, we move to try and align with the common course standards, we're introducing a new course, we just want to, we haven't looked at the course in a number of years and want to find out whether or not it's still what we should be teaching, should be bringing other things in, reduce some curriculum writing each summer, and so that comes to you because then we have to start looking at materials that we need to use in order to do the writing. So I activate, opening, and give the individuals, identify the materials that they need and all the format, and then it's two back and forth by dollars first that we can go over. So that's why you see it annually, it's tied to initiatives that we're working on in the district. If you go through deep down to including H, those are grants that I write each year, or relationships I have such as the Boston Health Foundation. And when auditors come in to audit me, first they see that you have sanctioned approving that I submit the grant, and then if and when I get the grant, I bring back a dollar figure, and then you accept that particular dollar figure, which will be sometime between May and hardly September, the minimum. So that's why you see those shorties, Boston Health Foundation page for all your after-school busing for elementary students that either participate in, like, exercise type programs and an academic component, that pay for all of the, I'll call it intramural programs we run for the elementary schools, there's staff programs, there's a lot of outreach to needy families that comes out of that money, and all of that is going across to the district. We run as long as the foundation supports the effort that I put into that. It even reaches out to the coaches, students need for winter, they can't afford it. So there's a, I made a list because I'm gonna have an audit. It's amazing the things that we have stretched for the dollars. Usually, they, I get somewhere, and then they go through about $5,000 to $6,000 in a course a year from that. So they're very generous to the district and have supported it for many years. This is about the eighth year they have supported us.
I just wanna editorialize, I would like to thank Mrs. Trainer publicly, because it's her hard work that really helps us get this money, as a big benefit to the community.
Title one is focused on the privacy elementary and first row elementary center, and it's for students who are deficient in reading skills, and so it pays for part of the reading specialist's time, and for some other programs to be put in place to bring those students up to grade levels so they may be successful. Title two, A, this depends on I will look at, and somewhere we will find where I have to add a teacher, I'm thinking just off the top of my head, Mike in third grade at an infancy, where I'll move a teacher from second to third grade, and I apply that to that race line for individual, because of the need because of large class sizes that I have a section. And so that money, which comes to be somewhere in the neighborhood of $45,000 to $50,000 in bulk pay for that salary for this year, so just ready to get that salary. Race to the top three is all about a new teacher evaluation system that is coming out of the department a bit, and this is going to be tied to the training component and the subs that we need to be hired, or we have a spread years, it's a three-year range. So at this point, we're just broken, we intend to consider it, and if any other requirements, we will then go forward in May in order to follow up on that, so.
Unlike, if I can again add in here, unlike the last time, if you remember the, kind of the hubbub that arose over Race to the Top, and we didn't accept it, this time around, they're, they're making it, they've changed the stipulations in the grant, and there's not a, necessarily, we wouldn't incur any costs as a result of this. The reason that we had rejected it before, when the original Race to the Top came out, was we were afraid that we were gonna be stuck with some mandates that we couldn't pay for. That isn't the case with this one.
And we're talking probably somewhere in the neighborhood of $1,000, so, just so very close to money. Your title one parent involved in grants is a grant that we have a payment program that we offer to parents, title of students, some are neighborhood of $500 to $1,000, and they're giving to our school districts across the state. Any of their offering, we have been successful in being able to procure that money in order to provide resources and training to parents, and also help them to support what we do with your school day at home. So those are the great things that right now I have, that could be becoming really great. Again, we don't know that, that probably be something that comes out of the next year in August. If it does, then you'll see the same process for the permission to apply and the money that we can get from that also. Each year, for, since I've been doing the professional handle, and in time, there are changes to the handle. I bring it just for approval, I put a front cover on, so you don't have to read the entire employee personnel on the professional handle. The first one, the first section that I changed was just the semantics of, I don't have to keep reading rights in the big letter, somebody's role changes, if I don't have the name of the individual, that's all over our documents, I just put addresses and contact phone numbers for a job instead of the actual person. I brought to you a while ago, a formal process to update our... I brought to you a while ago, a formal process to update our family medical needs and a form that went with it. So, we updated the information that employees would then need to have, now that that's been approved along with the forms, so that was included. And finally, only few of all the issues we've had in the last couple months, at the last meeting that we had, the critical instruction and the policy meeting, it was brought up that we should be putting our anti-discrimination statement everywhere that we could find it appropriate, just to reemphasize what we believe is the district, so I inserted that also in the professional handbook. So, those are really given the market changes. And all this is here today.
Let me just add, Jay, we just, that somehow got omitted from last month's board, but that's been set, so you usually vote on that, so. June 7th is graduation.
I just have a question about the handbook. Do we physically still print the handbook?
You get one when you're first employed with the district, and the first year, everybody got a hard copy. It is online, and they do, we had just updated pages like I need to separate. I don't.
It's an attachment. Attachment 11.
Did it, yeah. So, yes, they have a copy, it turned it in, and then they resign or retire, and then we give it out to somebody else.
So, you don't actually reprint the entire book?
No, no, no. Just, and we do it in blue so that they know that we're updating pages, so they can, each person actually has a hard copy to repurchase it. And they sign each year that they've read any updates, and they have updated their books, so that we have that on file.
When was the last time that we actually reprinted the entire handbook?
The book was only published for the first time two years ago, and last year, we just announced some updates.
I was just wondering, if we reprint it on a regular basis, or can we just do it electronically and not give out the handbooks? Or is there a reason why we have to give them?
Well, we're only giving out one or two now, as somebody comes in. We felt, for legal purposes, it was important that they all had a hard copy to start, and so now, we just give new professional employees that are not the former, that have two degrees within the elements, I think will be too many of those, oh, sorry, over the years.
Okay, this period's, they've done updated.
The last thing that I included for your information is our summer school program. It runs at no cost to the school district, and so that's why our new book, we're having seen, we see a minimal number of students required in vacancies next to the cost. And if they don't get the minimal number of students, then the program wouldn't run. Programs typically all we run each year. We have one change that was not included in the past, and that would be over on page three. The cost of our remedial program for credit recovery is not cheap, but because you have to figure it at contract rates for ten students, it costs a resident $270 to take, let's say, an algebra course or chemistry course if they fail the course for the summer. And we have noticed a number of students over the years have, parents have made decisions to use some online high school program that's cheaper, and it is the current level, we have control over, that's the way I was instructed, and yes, it did pass it, and so Mr. McCall and I said, we own high school solid software programs called compass boarding, and so why aren't we doing it ourselves, at least as a pilot, to see whether or not some individuals would accept our staff being there as quarter posts? And it was worth a try because we would at least bring a couple back, I mean, going outside of the district. And so, the plan is that they will be separated from us as far as the technical aspect, just sort of technically. You can go online, if you have children here now, you may have seen them log on the system in your autonomous. We own the entire array of solid following, I'd say, high school courses. And so, if I was going to do that program, I would sign up, pay with the, I could do it at home, if I wanted to come into school to do it, I could do that, and I have access to a content person, presi, that would be on the call six hours a day, or two days a week, three hours, let's say, from eight till 11:00. If I have questions in history, I could come in, and there would be somebody in there who could help me so that I could go back and continue working on the program. That's more than, I mean, just log it on to some program, some are in the next phase who might be using. So, we do think that we'll be able to attract a couple of students and still support students. We are not going to encourage math students to do it, because we believe that one-on-one instruction of our instructors is truly the only way. Our history of students who have gone to virtual programs is they fail them, and then they have to take a course again. So, there isn't a track record of a student who is deficient in taking an online program. So, we are certainly going to continue to encourage them to come on site for that particular program. They will still be required to come in on site for all their assessments and for the final exam, they won't pass the closest final exam that we have here. So, we're trying to, I think, the best for the world to go to. So, it's worth a shot to see if we can help out some students who are needy families that aren't able to pay the whole price, so I'll let them know that as we start to see involvement for some of the programs.
Thank you. I just wanted to go through that exercise, especially for the new board members, so that you see kind of some of the programs that were, and it's not just a line item here that you're voting on, it's a lot of good detail here, a lot of important stuff going on, and we'll continue to do that as we go through these program sections of the agendas each month, so that you have a better understanding of some of the things that you're seeing here, because I know sometimes on paper, it just doesn't do it justice.
I also have traditional programs running this summer. You may have your own family, Canada Vision is running again, the week of June 18th, this science camp for elementary and sixth grade students, and that's a national program, we house it here, and they pay the staff, they move staff that manage that program. We'll get at least a hundred students in that program, and so it's been very successful. I have to go back, I'm going to say this is about a fourth year of running that program, it's full day program for the week, and students truly enjoy just taking science to a good level as hands-on, it's a great program for our students. The other one is our writing program through Westchester University, that's maybe writing and literacy, and that will be running in July for two weeks for students in second through fifth grade, and that's for students who enjoy reading and writing and taking it to a creative level. We actually have set up scholarships for that program, we have some students identified for that, so I envision last year, remember specifically, I'm going to say there were about 15 students enrolled, and the enrollments looks like it's going to be up this year, and that's also run by our staff, but it is affiliated with Westchester University. So, those are two additional programs.
Anne Marie, what are the costs of those two programs?
If you, the best thing, the writing project would be if you sign up soon, I don't know what the deadline for the first, like, lower rate is, it's about $225 for two weeks, I think it goes up to $250 for students who might be signing on later, and it's similar cost for Canada Vision.
And what's the cost of this new online version of the map?
Just 10 times the, we own it, so it's just, it will cost maybe $100.
No, the cost for the students, you said you're offering this as an alternative to paying $270?
$150.
$150, okay.
This is about, almost half, half the cost.
I'm looking at page four on the summer programs, and it says, the summer school faculty. Is that paid positions, or are these, all of these positions here are paid?
Yes, and you're paid at the rate that you're in, that you have in your contract for the association.
Okay, because I see the summer, the summer 2012 writing projects, and I see people, I see the names that are going to be the instructors, and then they're stipend. I don't see that here on all these names, I was just wondering.
That's because they're not paid by us.
Oh, is that?
Paid by us, just your university and paid by the Canada Vision.
Okay, so that's.
It has nothing to do with your contract, they have a stipulated amount, and they agree to it independently of us.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, because the question was rather long, and I thought, hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Any comments from the public? Okay, seeing them move on to policy.
Okay, board members, for items A through T, if you recall, we had pulled those off last month, they have been reviewed by the solicitor with no changes, as from the way they were originally posted, so unless there are any questions, they'll come back for a vote next week.
Yeah, I'm going to still bring up my objection to F. Yes, it's just that be mindful that you're putting in a percentage of missed meetings versus our number. Again, the policy states that you miss a number of meetings based upon an unexcused absence tool can get you potential report, but it's an unexcused, and every policy I've read by every other district in the county identifies whether, you know, whether to put it in for sickness, you know, and my concern with the percentage, and then bring this up to Mr. Supers on another, in a conversation, when you put a percentage in there, and it's never going to, it probably never happened, but you remove a board member from missing three meetings, and that equals your 50%, and down the road, you remove another board member from missing two meetings, which was 50%, you got an issue that, you know, the number of meetings, if you just put two in, it would just never happen, it would probably never hap, and our issue is, you don't want a board member that gets elected, just decide he doesn't want to come anymore. You still got to wait 15% of the meetings, where, you know, two consecutive meetings, you remove them because they're unexcused absences. Work's excused, I work, Mr. Sherman, we travel, we work, you're out, it's excused. You're sick, it's excused, you have a family member pass away, it's an excuse. You just don't want to come, it's an unexcused absence tool, you remove the board member. Otherwise, you got to wait for 15%, which could be two, it could be three, it could be four, based upon a number of meetings you have, that was my issue of concern, I'm just revoicing, you know, my concern with that, to make it more difficult to rectify a problem down there.
I think, I mean, when we talk, we brought it back to the committee, it came up.
Thirty to 15, cut in half.
Yeah, I mean, the way they looked at it was, if, you know, you suddenly increase the number of meetings by, you know, I don't know, four or five, then, you know, people, the likelihood of people missing more meetings is going to increase. Whereas if reduced the meetings, just, I'm just giving you the rationale, okay? I wasn't, I rolled with it, it wasn't, I didn't see it as being a big issue, but, you know, obviously, we can talk about it again at the voting meeting, you know, there was only two or three of the people there for the policy committee meeting, so.
And again, it's not going to affect this board probably, it may not affect them, it might, the biggest concern is, it has happened in the past, and again, we weren't, I don't think anybody here was on this board, there was a board member elected a number of years ago that preferred to sit in the audience or just not show up, and, but show up just enough and with an excuse as to that one, you know, so if you have it where you identify what they are, and you're able to correct yourself, it makes it easier to give committee a nine versus eight, the one that just shows up when he wants to.
Think if it was defined of what an excused absence was, like, soft call?
Yeah, exactly, and if you look at Word Down, if you look at a few of the others, they have what's an excused absence, they say sickness, work, that's a, you know, anything that is agreeable, you know, an excused absence, just that I don't want to come. And most of ours are going to be sickness at work.
Yeah, I don't, vacation, whatever.
I mean, that's, again, simple.
Okay. I actually had a question, Dr. Otto, one of the things that came up with policy number 238, which is our bullying and cyberbullying policy for the rest of the board's benefit, one of the questions I raised was, it just talks about how one student repeatedly makes comments or gestures or acts over another student, didn't really address the issue of administrative or faculty or volunteers, et cetera, et cetera. So, the introduction of these three other policies, you feel covers anyone that may be affiliated with the school district and the bullying that may happen electronically?
Absolutely, I think this covers our other, the other three groups that we work with.
That covers volunteers? I'm just trying, I don't want to leave anybody out, I mean, that's the reason why we're adding three more of these, these policies.
Right, that's, he's referring to X, Y, and Z here for the rest of you that are looking. No, and obviously, I mean, volunteers isn't listed, and Mrs. Trainer and I are, she has a comment.
I'm actually revising the volunteer manual for 1213, and I've inserted that same package that we put into the other three, and it's also, if you look at it, it's 9:09, the last part on that list tonight, we also put it in the extracurricular one for more approaches in those, technically, to come out with that definition of the anti-discrimination. So, I think we've now covered all groups, and also the process of there is bullying, so I don't think there's any other that we had not covered.
Okay.
And notice that many of the, they keep saying staff member, staff member, yet that, do we have the definition of what a staff member is? And I may, maybe, I guess I haven't read it closely enough.
I think, when you get to.
A volunteer would be considered a staff member, and would be, I think.
I know what we did was, we changed a lot of things throughout policies in general, this has come up where we say an employee, and so we did consciously make a decision was to change that to staff, because that would include anybody who's working for the school district.
Would you identify or put the definition somewhere of what a staff?
Didn't we identify staff somewhere as covering sort of volunteers or classified employees or?
I don't remember which policy, but we did do that, and I carried that thought through the.
Right, because one of the issues was, we identified employees, but, you know, that doesn't apply to people who volunteer and so on and so forth, so we wanted.
Again, you just identify what the staff, what a definition of a staff member is somewhere in other policies.
Yeah, I, I got to make sure, I can't remember exactly where that is, but that's.
I think covered if you've done that.
Yeah, that's certainly something that we talked about. The other question I had on here was, did you guys address? It talked about in 238, each staff member shall be responsible for maintaining an educational environment free from bullying. Staff members who observe or become aware of an act bullying, act of bullying shall take immediate appropriate steps. I mean, there's no equivocation in that, it's a command to do something, to intervene. I guess I'm curious about, are there penalties for failure to act? Is that something, then, you would just revert to a violation of all school policies and then go through that in terms of disciplinary action, or do we need to spell that out in the?
No, that's considered a professional responsibility, just like turning in lesson plans or making sure you correct tests and papers, and, not that I want to use those as the same level of, but it's just another one of the things that a teacher's required to do, and if they're not doing it, then that would fall under disciplinary action as needed.
Will that carry over to classified staff or volunteers?
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure that it's transferring through to everybody. And Anne Marie, I didn't get a chance to read through all of them, you said you did put in a procedure then for following up on the, in these other policies as well?
The core, where there's the student line, what you do when you feel bullying, and then when I give the professional staff and administrative staff, I changed the wording so it would represent who their, who their playing person would be, whereas the student line said, who would like to answer, or who would be somebody, I changed each one to make it appropriate to the section that I put in.
Okay.
I have a question, maybe my agenda's wrong, why, policy 238?
It's 329.
No, 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 238 was the policy that we modeled these three after.
Oh, okay.
So, we didn't have these other three, they're all new?
238's already approved.
Okay, but, okay, you keep referring to that, and I keep going, I don't.
My apologies, 238 was what precipitated the whole conversation, so.
Let the public know what 238 is.
So, 238 is our anti-bullying and cyberbullying policy.
For students.
It was particularly addressed to students, and it didn't address the issue of if a staff member or volunteer or somebody else engaged in cyberbullying with a student. And so, we wanted to make sure we were addressing that issue going forward, hence now we have three new policies that will address that uniformly.
That's all?
Thank you for the, asking for the clarification. Okay.
Other, I don't wanna.
I don't have any other questions. Any other board members have questions on?
There's three policies I didn't talk about.
Oh, which ones would you like to talk about?
U, V, and W. Just again, you have first reading, revised policy 107. You know, it's just a minor wording edit. If you check the attachment, there's only one word scratched out of there, but it is one that, it doesn't have any legal bearing. The policy 110 on special ed was reviewed by Mrs. Mikowski and reflects changes to comply with current law. Special ed law is always kind of in flux. And the first reading of 110.1, discipline of students with disabilities, again, without having to go into a long dissertation based on federal and state law, students with IEPs have certain legal protections that we have to make sure that we ensure as a school district. This policy actually, you wouldn't need this policy, but just raises it to another level because it's already written and based on federal and state law. And AA is, as we said, we inserted the anti-discrimination notice in that policy as well. So that concludes policy from my point.
Okay, now any questions, comments from board members? Okay, any questions or comments from the public on policies?
Well, basically, we're, um, when we attended the policy meeting, we had talked about procedures that would be easy for parents and students to access if they developed a certain early awareness. I know we're talking about policies here, the legal information, but I just wanted to know if we can move forward with application of procedures or some kind of documentation that we use or follow for procedures for parents, students, teachers that are bullied or interested in.
I think, as I recall, when we put, if you remember, because I believe we might have had a conversation about this when we posted the anti-discrimination notice modeled after the one at Pots Grove, we also took their procedure and included all of that information on the web link so that there's now a new form to deal with, there's a new procedure, who they can go to, et cetera. I, Anne Marie, you can help me, because you helped me with this.
I just wanted to add that we have 645 posters in the buildings throughout the district. There's two paragraphs, and the second one just says, if you're feeling bullied or oppressed, if you're stupid, voted by the guidance council, blah, blah, blah. So it's laminated and it will signal that. And there is like a procedure, like if a student knows to go to the guidance council and they do, then the guidance council is filling out a form.
Well, we've actually, we can actually, we can either have the, the student could fill it out as well, because what we want to do, which we found was, I think, a little bit of a flaw in our system, is that we weren't getting a lot of things in writing. It was all hearsay. So we created a form that said, now we're gonna have a documentation. We'll follow it, step one, step two, step three. Everything gets put into writing now.
Okay.
There is a form here. I mean, if you put this form with a link on, I don't know, is that each school, government?
It's actually out on the whole page.
Okay, but that way, just so you can talk about the process, if there's a form that you can fill out, it's a little process, it's a portal, they're gonna be active for it, then they would be able to follow the process and know what that process is and what form we can fill out, kind of hunt it back and around our column.
Right, or, you know, just so that there's a paper trail, there's some documentation.
Absolutely.
So that if a student or a coach or teacher or anyone's feeling bullied, then there's a paper trail. Maybe it's the same teacher bullying or the same child bullying, and then there's some kind of documentation. So I was just wondering if that's easily accessible. Not everyone has a computer, but at least a poster, I'm not sure how many of them in school districts to see that are posted or listed, but just easy, simple procedures for when this happens, what's happening next, and what would be, you know, in result.
Well, I, I'm gonna keep my fingers crossed. I believe we've, you know, started this, obviously, and we've put a good process in place, and we'll obviously begin to monitor it and see how it works and make any changes as needed.
I think, what, I mean, you brought up two points. One was, and you're starting to refresh my memory. One was, is there the paper trail and can it be, is it recorded? Can we follow it backwards? And then the second one was accessibility and ease of use, right? So we want to make sure that both students and faculty and everybody's aware of what the procedure is and how you go about going through it. And I think the only way you can really do that is, once you put everything in place, maybe, you know, in two months, you survey students. Where would you go if you felt like you were being bullied? And try to get some feedback as to whether or not they understand what the process would be, whether you're, you know, first or second grader or you're a senior. And same thing with classified employees and teachers and everybody else.
Right on the homepage, under students and parents, there's a bullying anti-discrimination link. You drop it down, there's two PDF files, and the first one is the actual process. One, step one, this is what happens. Step two, this is what happens. And then the actual form you fill out. It is there. I found it in the second, so it's on the student.
I think the next step goes, you make, get brand awareness. A one-year-old or a first grader's not gonna know to go to the website.
No, I think what has to happen, and this will be part of what we do as we move forward and begin to examine things on the diversity committee. This is something that, when you begin to make it part of the culture, and we started with the open orientation for students. I mean, we're three-quarters of the way through the year now, so it's gonna be a little tougher to sink in this year. But I think as we open school and make a message upfront from day one, there'll be time for it to sink in. So it'll take a little bit of, a little massaging, so to speak, as we go along.
Any other questions or comments on policy?
I have a great round of, I wrote a row back to the last month. I was seeing on the board agenda, some numbers about incidents that occur in school, elementary schools, middle schools, and high school. I think it's really important to get that visibility out on the board agenda. Has any discussion happened around that suggestion I made a long ago?
As far as I know, we haven't added that to the agenda yet, no.
Do you think that's something that could be added at the school board meetings?
I mean, I didn't have an objection to a section on safety and whether it's a subheading under curriculum instruction. I'm not sure where we'd go in here, but I have no issue with it myself. But I'll let the rest of the board speak to that.
The schools and the buses, so that the public see what's going on in the school district from an ownership point.
We are required, and Mrs. Trainer, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we have an annual Safe Schools report that we have to fill in every year that might contain the statistics that you're looking for. So we gather those. I don't, whether they're done on a monthly basis, a quarterly basis, I'm not sure, but we do gather that kind of information as required by the Department of Education as well.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just saying, I think that as a parent in the school district, it's important to have transparency in that communication and help to both parents in the school district. So, thank you.
Can I agree? Any other comments from board members?
Now, your board, let us know. I'm very pleased to see that new policies have been added, bullying and cyberbullying, which I'm not sure if I believe. I just wondered about how would these new policies be related to parents and students, you know, and, let me say.
Generally, what happens with a policy, it's, the first place is here. It gets posted on this agenda, and then it's posted for two months. We post them at different places around the district. Mrs. Trainer, you can help me where the public postings might be. Obviously, they're, the agenda is always on the web. I, do we post the draft agenda or the draft policies as well out for the public?
Let's do it. Lori, which one? We send out the second, second reading or the first?
The first.
The first reading.
First reading's posted.
And there are in, like in your entrance area, your building, you're in the faculty building, that tier.
But to answer your question, your first indication that we would even be considering a policy would be this very document, the committee of the whole agenda. This is where all first readings reside, and then they move through the process here.
Okay, and I just hear about cyberbullying. This would just apply to a student as on campus or from bus to school?
Anytime, we're pretty much limited in terms of how long the, the long arm of the school law stretches in terms of what's going on. We can certainly have discussions about it, but there have been some First Amendment national cases, actually some locally in the state of Pennsylvania, where there have been some pretty nasty things going on outside of the nexus of the school that the school really tried to take action on and the court shot them down. So it's a very gray area right now that I think is continuing to evolve in legal circles. So to answer your question, I hate to sound like a lawyer, but it all depends on what the situation is.
Okay, and my final question, how would a parent access these particular policies?
They are on our website. If you look right on the front, under the board tab, and if you just scroll down, every one of our policies and guidelines is readily available for you to. You can actually click and print them out if you would want them. They're in a read-only file, so they can't be altered. But you could actually copy them out and use whichever ones you would want.
Any other questions or comments from the public? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to transportation. I see we don't have anything. Mr. Potts, you said you're gonna try to schedule something.
I'm trying to schedule for Thursday, so I'll get it for the committee.
Okay, great. Old Business, Mr. McCullough, you want to start off with A?
Yeah, we had a committee meeting, brief committee meeting. I think we, the three of us have narrowed down.
Yeah, Cap, here.
We had a, we had a brief meeting tonight about redistricting the voting of members to the board. The committee has recommended that we come up with a policy that Bird Grove wanted to, we'll try to combine with Amity one. Amity voting districts three, four, and six will be one, and Unions one, two, Amity's two and five will now be a new one for future board members to try to have an even representation among all the statues in the district. So again, the committee, we recommend, three of us are recommending that. We institute that, and it should be in place by the next election.
That should be three board members from each of the-
Three board members from each. And then aware that, again, once the census takes place in 2020, it's possible we have to almost reshuffle it again, but that'll be a future board's decision whether to do that.
All right, I just want to-
And right now, each municipality has three boards, which would be by region.
Just for the benefit of people that heard that, that, I'm sure that sounded a little bit abstract. We'll put some graphics on the website for you to look at so you understand what Region One and Region Two and all of that meant, so that you'll understand what the vote is when it comes about.
Can we actually add that? Sorry, we can add that next, the voting meeting next week. And again, Dr. Otto, can you truly get a map of it?
We will have the graphics ready tomorrow.
Okay.
And it was to go with the one man, one vote concept.
Correct. Board members, any questions on that item? I know it's a pretty big deal, so we're discussing now. No? Okay. So you guys, on B, you guys are still working on this website?
We are. I promised you by the end of April. We're about 80% to 90%. The data's been gathered. Mr. Matts is working in the technology department. He's already shown me a draft of how we want to get it out there on the website so it's user-friendly and people can make use of it. So we will have that ready. I'll probably by the end of the week have that ready for the board update.
Okay, great, thank you. Reminder that the April 23 meeting of the board will be at the BCTC. Everybody, please RSVP to Lori as to whether or not you'll be attending the dinner there.
Tell the public where that is.
It's up in-
Ole.
Ole, right. I'm trying to think of the name of the road that's off of.
It's on, yes, I can't, it's just off of 73.
Yeah, you take a left at the light in Ole.
It's your next left. 1057 County Road in Leesport.
No, that's the west.
Oh, sorry, that's west.
That's the west center. We're not there.
Hold on, hold on. It's where we went last time.
Right.
Yeah.
Public is welcome to that meeting. It is an open meeting.
What the address is on the website is part of the meeting.
It says Ole PA. It does not address the-
Right. Freedensburg Road, that's what it is.
Okay.
Freedensburg Road in Ole.
All right. Also, policy 201, school age defined, curriculum instruction, gonna take that up at their main meeting. Any comments from board members on any of those items under old business? Okay, seeing none. Any new business?
Dr. Otto, I just have one minor comment. I was looking through the website, just making sure it was up to date and accurate. And I think we just need to correct Mr. McLaughlin's term expiration date. It listed as 2013, 2015.
My apologies. We'll get that done.
I noticed, I, nah, I was just looking around.
We're getting that in the notes. We'll have that fixed by tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Okay, any other new business? I'm seeing none. Any comments from the public on any
Very, uh, this week, the configuration of the election is suspended. Do you have a, do you have a?
So there's a little bit of a story to that. We don't have to do anything as a school district. We can sit back and not do anything at all. However, if another group decides that they want to pursue this, they could submit their own plan to the court, and the court would rule and probably approve their plan. And we would be left with, you know, either that large election or some other combination or hybrid of what we, of what we're proposing, so.
We're prepared currently, city, something that says that you're unconstitutional, there is only one man and one vote. The Amity council has, what, two and a half to three times the number of people that we, that they have the same amount of representation on the board. So kind of US Constitution, not legal. The last election that was brought up had a federal issue, led us to Senator Harrisburg, and got back to our solicitor, and it dropped to the estimate you need to look at, and you came up with no recommendation. You go 90th March, there were special interests that really looked forward or come up with somewhere, you know, it's closer. And that's what we did, is there about 32% each vote vote. Did it reach the outline of recognition?
We're being proactive. We're being proactive rather than, and we're submitting. And our proposal could actually turn down by the judge. So we're hoping it won't be. But we're trying to be a little proactive, so that if someone does file a claim against us, what we would call it, we already have a claim in place. We have a board agreement.
Rather than it be our claim, if somebody's only-
Correct, exactly.
Right now, presently, we have each, each area, three, four.
Correct.
And if you want to get down to, you want a special group that puts something in, and that group is in Lori, second, going to lift you, exactly.
That is correct.
Well, the population for spread, we looked at that.
That is possible.
You're still, you're still gonna probably get free from each municipality. The way we're looking at it, it's no problem with that. But if somebody, in case of two unions being, one is two in, or two are in, you could potentially get, you know, four out of any.
So at the end of the day, if you went to an at-large, basically anybody can run from anywhere and everybody votes for the entire slate of candidates. And the issue that concerned us was that from that approach, you could get nine board members from the same street in the same neighborhood.
Exactly right.
Sitting on the board, making decisions for the rest of the district. And we didn't think that was the appropriate, or nine people from the same special interest group. And we didn't think that was healthy for the school district. So we tried to come up with a plan that's, to the best of our ability, maintain the integrity of these three separate municipalities as, because they are different populations, and we thought that representation was important. And we were also constrained by, you have to have a certain percentage, equal percentage of population in each district that you create, and all districts have to be contiguous. So you can't take the southern half of Union Township and marry it to the northern half of Amity Township. All of them have to be contiguous to get there, so.
We couldn't redraw, we couldn't-
Can't redraw the districts.
And we can't draw the voting districts. So between those two constraints, you're not left with many options, to be quite frank. So we picked the best one we thought would work.
And I guarantee you, it's probably the perfect solution, but it's a fair solution right now, in 2020. right now, and twenty-one population might change, you know. And there is one district, by the way, that all nine board members from one region. Right now, there's an issue right now in that district, because again, they all live in the same area.
And also, the next month meeting, is this, oh, is this, these studies, that they're going to have their meeting, and we are going to have the.
No, 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 no.
Sort of argument?
Are you talking about the, the voting meeting next week?
Yeah.
No, they, occasionally, I believe we've done it one other time since I've been superintendent.
Twice.
We go out for a tour, and, and they offer, it's a public meeting, it's open, just like any other meeting, we're just changing our location. So you would be welcome to come out to Oly to, to sit in on the proceedings, just like anyone else.
So, I think we can see what you'd actually expect yourself.
Yeah, I'm sure, I believe, but on the thing here for the, I'm rescued, which is more, like, thanks, I did catch a lot of chances tonight, just have various program on that, these, like, I'm glad, excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
The address is on the website.
Freedensburg Road?
Yes.
Big Bull, four-four-three Hill Road, that episode. I'd like to take note of the fact that there are probably twenty people who are citizens, like, citizens of, that, who is school district here, and I'd like to thank all of them for coming out. I'm the coordinator for the, for the Tax Spirit Association, and I send out over three hundred emails to folks who really, and let them know, or, or the different committee meetings, or, there was a piece in the Red Eagle, whereby Governor Corbett was, who had said that, well, why don't you people solve your own problems? Go to your school board meetings, tell them about the problems you're having with your taxes, your property taxes, don't tell me about them. Well, in effect, he had a point. If you look around and realize how many folks really attend these meetings, he really does have a bit of a point there. We really need to see an awful lot of our folks from the, that, who is school district here, the board committees interact, and I think we probably, I have, believe, more to address that, perhaps seen a little earlier tonight. That being said, however, Governor Corbett, we really can't solve our own problems. I'd just like to ask the board, what are we looking at, salary benefits wise, escalating over the next four years? And do we stand a prayer of having front-end taxation, take your.
No, property taxes will not cover the increase in the budget over the next four years.
Doesn't cover the budget this year?
It doesn't cover the budget this year, and so we'll be throwing deficits around, I mean, our, just that portion of our budget's moving around two, two-point-seven million dollars a year over the next three years. Property taxes, if they stay at the same index where they are now, you're talking about a half a million dollars a year, so we'll be throwing two million dollar deficits going forward unless we get some sort of increase in state funding or something else.
Thank you. I don't know what that's going to do weight to, and I'm sure you don't have any exact figures, but it's, it's gonna, it's gonna be, if we stay at the status quo, it's gonna be a lot of increases in property taxation, because you can only cut back so far.
It won't be fun.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, you'll have to raise property taxes, you'll have to spend fund balance, and you'll have to cut programs.
But the most we're able to raise property tax is gonna be a half, I mean, a half a million dollars, that's two million dollars, something with it, so, parking lot space, chairs, we gotta come up with money, and we can't raise taxes and not come up with that.
Okay. Just, I'm actually, hopefully, the press will pick this up there, or, make sure, like, in the House of Representatives right now, that we're still, you know, eliminating property taxes, in House Bill seventeen-seventy-six, Senate Bill fourteen-hundred. The, propose to eliminate the school property tax and distribute responsibility for revenues for public education across a much larger segment of the population. It will be a lot more fair, and it will actually be possible to continue to apply public education, continuing public education here in that, in the school district. I think it's important that folks start to wake up to the fact that we're going to have to do something in order to have us go forward with some of the, some of the really terrific things that I know that the school district does. And, you know, I've heard people talk about the, the middle school language program, or the elementary school band. I think they're great programs. I would love to see them stay intact. I don't see that it's gonna be possible, given, given the problems we're gonna have, continuing the salary benefits escalations that are gonna be occurring, so, we're here, just wanting to, you know, address that, and to try to wake up the, the, we need to get involved in this, because we're headed down a bad road right now. I have one question, and, I'm burnt to the, I guess this year's a possible, next year's a question. I just think if there is capital money available for capital expenditure.
Yes.
Okay. Has anyone considered using capital to purchase modular classrooms?
I don't think that's been a consideration.
Okay, why wouldn't it be a consideration? I mean, if you use the capital money, buy that to, to purchase classrooms, it may escalate or, or, you know, accelerate the ability to possibly maintain a building, sell that building, pay down debt, you know, reclaim the capital, you know, your investment. And if the school district does at some point in the future begin to expand again, it's not that difficult to move up a modular classroom into whatever new facility that school board, that may be needed. It's just an idea.
Well, all ideas, I think, are, are worth taking a look at, and we're desperate for ideas. I think, in terms of this year, obviously, shutting down a building's not an option, even given the time constraints that are out there, because you have to follow certain procedures in order to get that done with PDE, or, you know, Department of Education, so, but certainly something we can take a look at next year and the year after, as, as we consider that, that option through the Facilities Committee.
Okay, just, just, we, I mean, one of the, I'm trying to remember my side number, because if I quote the wrong number, I'm not, but there was a, you know, healthcare went up nine percent, that part of that number, but they said it was in two years, the retirement portion, the Peters portion, to be like twenty-three point six percent. It's gonna double in the next two years. You said twelve point something, go to twenty-three point six.
Yeah, it's out, I mean, it's outrageous.
And the force alone can't be modified, that, much less salaries and the healthcare.
Yeah, that's nothing, that has nothing to do with education.
Yeah, I mean, it's got nothing to do with education, or elementary band program, or whatever of these options that we talk about. I mean, it's strictly.
And the standpoint is, you look at, and you look at the sheet, you look at such a lot of foot, you don't do the elementary band this year, you don't do whatever, and raise taxes by half a mill. Next year, if we throw a two and a half million dollars balance, there is no way. I mean, I don't, I mean, I'm worried about next year, but you worry, this year, we could get, we should probably get home this year, but next year, there is no way to get home. There is absolutely no way to get home next year, period. You can eliminate the band, you could, you could, you could take Mr. Fackel's suggestion, get rid of high school sports, middle school sports, get rid of the band, and we're still gonna get a million and a half dollars. And that's with tax quarters.
And, exactly, and I know that, I know that you are, if you have a vested interest, I had, has no effect, or really doesn't have anything to do with, with education. And I know that you don't mean it doesn't have anything to do with education, because it has everything to do with education, because you're not spending money on kids, or, you know, so, right, and so we understand the concept, and, some's got here.
If you'll only quickly talk about Peters for a second. This is something that needs to be restructured on the state level of reform. It is incredibly, incredibly wasteful now, and it does not work, needs to be fixed. And that's something we don't have to go over here, but it's something that hopefully the state can look at. I'm not holding my breath, but hopefully, there's something that'll be done.
That's a political discussion.
Yeah, all the rest of the country.
Thank you.
Rich Martino, two-twenty-five, Los Angeles, Australia, four months ago. I don't know when the contracts expire. Does anybody look into, for, for BC IU, without providing transportation, instead of road for, for.
Contract.
We, we looked at that, and again, I'm probably the only one left on that committee.
I'm still here.
You were there, Dr. Ar?
Yeah.
Uh, we looked at it, the IU wasn't interested at the time, because they would have to buy all the buses. Our other concern was, and again, we do that, we would effectively drive one whole business, which we get tax dollars from out of business.
Actually, too.
Yeah, yeah, probably, too. They both said they probably both go out of, we know, well, we know Rosewood, because that's about all he does, besides limos, and ninety percent of the business that Klein shows would be gone, and they would, he would go out of business. And all those tax dollars would be gone, so there, it's a double-edged sword at that point.
It's not only taxes, you lose jobs.
Yeah, the jobs. I mean, the drivers are ninety-five percent.
They, they did that, they did it in Oly years ago, and the taxpayers overrode.
So we looked at that, we did, and, the districts, they did it, didn't save a lot of money, they did one. They went from their own bus, went, went to a third party, which is what we have right now, a third party.
I don't even remember what it is, that's maybe the best, I believe, that, student participation for your activity schools, and, 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 football, for instance, breaks money, and, so, when I thought about it, it's not possible to settle up the cost of all these activities, because the revenue would go in, and, and, we'd go ahead and participate in schools.
We looked at that sort of model, what we did, in the Activity Fee Committee over a year ago, two years ago. I, let me just be pretty clear on this, because it, it seems to keep coming up quite a bit. No single sport generates enough revenue to be self-sustaining. That's just a fact. And so, whether it's football, football generates a lot of revenue, however, they don't generate enough revenue to cover foot, the cost of football.
They're about the closest, though.
They're about halfway.
Right.
Okay? Basketball generates another good portion of revenue, you know, in total ticket sales, but they don't cover their costs. Wrestling, I think, is the third ticket driver, and, and again, it pales in comparison to the actual cost of the program. So even when you net all that out, and then you figure, okay, what are the costs of the individual programs after you take in revenue sources, and then divide that by the number of students or whatever, it, it still doesn't come out to be an equitable distribution across the sport itself, or across the district. Now, you can scale it, and you can say, okay, well those who play a more expensive sport have to pay more. That was summarily rejected by the Activity Committee, and we had a broad representation of the public, as well as administrators, and, and coaches, and board members on that thing, and it just, they didn't think that that was the best way to move forward. And so, the, the idea behind the, the model that we currently have was to try to keep it as simple as possible, and as uniform as possible across the district, and in, and at a price level that generates as many, as much fees as we possibly can. And I think the other misnomer that's out there is that most people think that the activity fees pay for the programs. They don't. They cover about a third. I mean, we spend, what, six hundred and somewhat thousand dollars on, on athletics and extracurriculars, and we only generate a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in gate receipts and activity fees. It, you know, actually, it's two hundred and somewhat thousand dollars when you're adding the gate receipts. But it pales, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in, in fees from the activity fee alone. It pales in comparison to the overall cost of the program. So, these things are just designed to subsidize what we can, and help keep the programs along, around as long as we possibly can, until we somehow get through this budget crisis.
Let me bring up, and I need to talk about a couple of buildings this year. When I moved here in two thousand and three, middle school, high school was all one building, building a middle school here, which had to leave space in the high school. Had to leave the space next to the middle school. Does anybody consider moving eighth grade into the high school, or fifth grade into the middle school?
Um, I think that.
You can't do that. You can't, no, you can't do a curriculum, right, Mrs. Trainer?
You can shuffle schools around, and the composition of schools around, but it's a bigger process than just, you know, a one-off, and just, as, as you, to give you an idea, I look at enrollment figures all the time. I'm constantly watching them. So, enrollment has decreased overall, but, you know, in two thousand and six, you had twelve hundred and eight students in the high school, you have eleven hundred and seventy today.
What did you have in two thousand and three?
Two thousand and three, you had ten, uh, one thousand twenty-nine.
No, the high school and another school.
Oh, high school and middle school combined, um, about, just shy of two thousand.
And that's what I'm saying, that space exists.
No, but we stay, we have two thousand students today in the high school and middle school.
Next, the year number seven, twelve?
That was seven, twelve, maybe, twenty-three.
Not a six.
In two thousand and three?
I'm just looking at what you have here in the middle.
Now, you're next to grade, but now you're next to grade, you have six twelve now.
No, I'm saying is that space that existed, for seven, eight, or twelve.
Well, what you heard from Dr. Ar earlier was, if, if, they're actually looking at some extra capacity in the high school, and as a place to put the administrative offices when the lease expires in the Matthew Brook Building.
But it's not classroom space.
It's not. It wouldn't, no, there's.
I'm just, I'm like, you're talking question, you're saying, everything should be on the table, and, what I hear is there's a nine-hundred-eight-thousand-dollar shortfall still, this year, not counting the, four years. And I have heard at least two, if not three, board members talk about, we don't want to do this, or we don't want to do that, because people don't want to move here. Don't price out the people that already live here. And that's what I'm worried that you're doing, by saying what you can't do, instead of looking for three or two extra people. If, if, if people don't want to move here, it's less than, and, and less tax, less taxes from people that have the kids in the school. Take care of the people that already did, if we're worried about who might want to move in. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
One, please, can I say that, that our, or, or, schoolhouse board?
Thank you for being so specific. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I can believe I said that, got, like, I said, bar, that's where I used to live. Anyway, schoolhouse board. Did you mention that possibly the activity fees may be eliminated? Like, this is just a temporary thing?
No, I don't, I don't think I ever suggested the activity fees would be eliminated.
Okay.
I, I don't think it's ever been discussed. I mean, anything's possible, but it's never been discussed.
The fees are forever at this point.
Unless, unless you can figure out another way to get us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
I mean, the whole purpose of the fee was to help subsidize the cost of the programs, and so, until we figure out a way out of this budget mess, and we're throwing surpluses, and, you know, the money tree outside is just blooming dollar bills, I don't know how we'd ever be able to eliminate that, the activity fee. I mean, who knows? We can start a foundation, and the foundation may raise a gazillion dollars and start funding things like athletics and everything else, and maybe there would not be a need for, for that, but we'd have to take that one year at a time.
Are they set for this coming school year?
We have not made any changes to the activity fee structure as of yet.
Is that, is it probably changed?
There's no plans on the table to change it, but this board can decide whatever it wants to do between now and June thirtieth.
Okay. And you had mentioned that football, basketball, and wrestling were getting money, and the athletes have to pay a fee. And you were talking about the fees being equitable, how can you make it equitable for everyone, right?
Yeah, I think I said that, yep.
So, I think the idea about, could the kids that are participating maybe not have to pay, because those, right now, you're walking to a track game, a soccer game, a baseball game, and they'll have to pay, but yet still, the sports that are generating money, that those kids have to pay fees.
But we, but we looked at the, the, just, in, in your, I know we got, you know, we go with this. We looked at football, and part of that, when the committee came back, is that the cost of our football program, and I'm not gonna come up with numbers, who is that, but we, we, the football program, we provided half of the cost of one of that programs. So if you took the rest of that, and divided it amongst the football players, they would be paying more than a hundred and fifty dollars.
Oh, yeah, they'd be paying several hundred, I mean, three, four hundred bucks a student.
Hundred dollars per football player, to, to come up with the rest of the money that it did not.
We discussed that in the committee, too, the graduated fee structure.
Yeah, we, we talked about a graduate, some school districts will do that. They'll say, oh, like, like, you know, ice hockey. They'll say, oh, like, you know, ice hockey, it's an expensive sport, right? So, they'll say, hey, look, you know, we take the total cost of the sport, divide it by the number of students, you can deduct, if you want to, the revenue, gate receipts, or whatever, and then divide the balance by the number of students. And you're coming up with numbers like $400, $500 a student, for them to participate in that sport, if you want to do it that way. And the problem that a lot of people in the committee felt was, you're putting up a very large barrier for some folks to be able to participate in that activity. And, and as a result, you're only going to find the people who have the ability to pay playing that sport, and you could decimate a, a particular program in the school district. And that, that number even, can go even higher for some other ones, where they don't have the base, that a football program, like, we have a lot of players, right? You have, pick, I don't know, golf, or chess, or something else, that, that has a very finite number of participants, but the cost to run that thing is still pretty high. It may not be as much as a football program, but, you know, on a, on a per student basis, the numbers are actually even higher. I think I, when we actually did the calculation, women's softball was cost more per student to run than the football program did. So, all of a sudden, now you're going to, you know, someone's going to say, wait, you're going to, you're going to spend $500 to play baseball? Is that, that's crazy. But that's what, that's what the numbers ran. So, we moved away from that model, and we moved to something that was a little bit more fair, you know, what we thought was fair, which was a uniform fee for all activities, we weren't going to discriminate which one was, you know, more important than the next, or, or scale them, everybody pays the same fee, whether you want to play soccer, or you want to play football, or field hockey, or whatever it is.
We also did look to 100% compensate the cost of the program, because that, that drove that number higher.
Yeah, I mean, in order for activity fee to be self, to sustain the entire program, I mean, they'd be, they'd be $500, $600 a student, you know, and then we'd fund everything, but you wouldn't, you'd have a problem with families being able to afford that.
It's hard for, you have to start with kids, and, and I mean, there's a pact, but you have to start with kids, and then you have to pay fees to get into the games, and then there's five people in the family, or six, or whatever, it gets very expensive. And, and, you know, one other concern is that, when you go to other schools, they also have activity fees, but their admission into the game is actually less than coming to see a kid play a sport and move, you know? Five dollars, four dollars, three dollars, six dollars per person to get into a baseball game. Or, does the board control what the fees are?
Yeah, absolutely, the board controls the fees. As a matter of fact, we raised the fees from, I think, three and $5 respectively, to four and $6 last year, to help plug the hole in the budget. I mean, this, really, it comes down to, to, but no one likes these decisions. I mean, I could tell you that, you know, we, we struggle with these things, we've been struggling with it for three years, but we're trying to do the best we can to generate revenue from alternative sources, because we can't rely on the state to keep increasing our revenue stream, and we can't rely on the tax base to keep doing it, because the index shrinks, and quite frankly, you know, you're looking at tax rates, you know, up around 30 mils now. So, you're, we're limited on to which, where, what buckets you can get revenue to pay for these things, meanwhile, our costs are doing this. So, you know, people can start donating money to the school, we can, you know, we tried launching an adopt a program, we're trying to start a foundation, there's lots of different ways, private schools do it all the time, to fund their operations. We need, we need help from the community.
That is one area that could be very helpful and instrumental by the public, is, you know, there, there is no one single solution to this problem. We're turning over every rock, and trying to figure out everything we can within, you know, we have parameters in which we're allowed to work with, in as well, and that's what we're working in, trying to budget, balance this budget. But the community can really help with coming together to help with, with fundraisers, with helping get a foundation thriving in this community, which we desperately, desperately need. And we're working toward trying to get one established, just because, as a board, we feel like it needs to be there, but, but really, it's not driven from the school board. The, the school board is a, is a recipient of, of that. So, the community could really help by coming together and, and help, helping to organize a foundation, getting it going, having fundraisers, there could be special interest groups out there, raising money for certain sports, all those things will help solve the problem. There, there is no one solution.
Well, there's a big concern, you know, you know, a family or, or, you know, I know how important sports are, yes, I can come up with the money, you know, play, we can't come watch it, you know, that's that. So, is there a policy in place for kids, we come, yes, districts have our funding, families are having our funding, is there a policy in place for kids that can't afford the fees?
Yeah, we do, as part of the activity fee, if you are on the free and reduced lunch, if you qualify for that, you don't pay an activity fee.
Do you know, there are kids that qualify for free and reduced lunch, some of them don't play a sport, that's one thing, but those that want to play, play, and they, maybe their characters lost their job, you know, I mean, maybe, so, is there a, is there a policy?
No, I mean, the policy, the policy for the activity fee is, if you are in a free and reduced lunch program, if you qualify for that, then you do not have to pay the activity fee, or the, you know, whether it's the sport fee, or it's the club fee. That's, that's the policy. Now, you know, for every dollar that you take out of our revenue stream by saying, look, we're going to waive this for families who have kids that play sports, we're going to waive ticket prices, or we're going to waive, you're just taking another dollar out of the revenue pile, and you're, you're increasing the cost pile by that same dollar figure. So, we got to figure out some way to, to fund that. Now, I've sat in meetings, last year, a year before, I remember, one parent stood up and said, you know, I'll pay for, you know, the neighbor next door to play a sport, or whatever, I have the means, so I'll pay for that. But, I mean, that's, that's not really the board's domain, I think that's where a foundation...
Are we...
Yeah, I mean, look, that's where, where churches, or, or foundations, and things like that, people can come together as a community, and, and provide for their fellow students, or, or neighbors, and, and, and fund these things. I mean, there are foundations out there that, that generate over a million dollars a year in revenues to support their schools.
Obviously, we also have the sports boosters, and music boosters, or so, I mean, obviously, they're, they're always going to the plate, I mean, that's obviously something with the, if it's a sports issue, you need to go, go to them, and maybe get something working inner, inner thinking there.
Now, I don't want to distract from this important issue, but I'd like to say, there is another way we can help alleviate this burden, that would be if the teachers' union decided to do the right thing, and come and help reduce the cost of some of these stipends, because these stipends are very expensive, chess club, I don't know what it is, it's a good number. And if the teachers' union would come to the table and help us out, I believe that we could really help, maybe bring that activity down a little bit, that's my opinion. Plus, Mr. Poole's point, I mean, there's not a lot of people here in the audience, compared to how many in our district, of course. And I think part of our role, based on how I, find my role, is to be a sounding board for ideas that people bring to you, that maybe, for whatever reason, they can't come. And there may be ideas out there that, quite frankly, no one has really, has considered. Example was, two weeks ago, I had somebody ask, ask me to bring something forward, is how, how Twin Valley and Yuleford, but their, their sports teams, and their extra credit pay, they charge that tip to everyone, regardless of who they're involving up. And I think we, we just got our opinion from our solicitors.
Politicians do that, politicians.
Well, I didn't say it was a good idea.
I'm just saying, politicians do that.
Right. But, I mean, I mean, somebody obviously out, in those districts thought it might be a good idea, but how are they going to justify it? So, I mean, we don't, I think the general consensus was, it wasn't an idea that you wouldn't want to adopt here, but somebody obviously had an idea of how they were going to attack that. And if somebody out there may have a different option that, quite frankly, we don't know about, if any one of us would be able to bring that to the attention of the board, to the consideration, so, I think the more people getting involved with ideas, the better.
Okay, thank you, appreciate your input. Mr. Poole, we're going to, I'm going to have to hold you just one comment.
No problem. Anybody who wants information on meeting schedules, what's going on with the taxpayers, it's nopropertaxes@yahoob.com. Please write me, if you're listening to the number of taxpayers, I'll be very happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Any other comments from the public?
Shane Harbly, I sent an email, probably a couple months ago, about balancing your budget, and next year, there was a surplus part of what you had budgeted, you get like $49.1 million, it's kind of $51 million, it came to like $1.5 billion or less.
My recollection was that, you're, you're taking into consideration this Plan Con J money, which is $900 and somewhat thousand dollars.
Okay.
Right?
Which is, it came back to us, and has to be used, well, we've discussed how it has to be used. Okay, so, the, the number that you're using this year for your expenses is 50, really?
I have to pull it up.
Don't use last year's number, that's true, we round off.
We had, sorry, last year.
Back up to about, yeah. And I think that's what we want to know. We didn't start 51, whatever, we started zero, we're going back.
Okay.
And quite frankly, Shane, over the last two years, I mean, our, our expenses were doing this, and in the last three years, due to the cuts that we've been making, they've, we've kind of held right around at that $50 million level. It was like 49, 48, 49, 50, we're talking about 51 now, whereas before, it was jumping three to four million dollars a year, it's not jumping by those mounts anymore, it's been, it's, it's leveled off, it's plateaued.
Our revenue's gone back.
And our, but our revenue's also dropped, too, but we've, we've done, we're doing a lot of the things that we can, whatever we can do to, to shrink the growth of the school district's expenses, until our revenue stream has an opportunity to catch up to it. But unfortunately, we have some drivers that we don't have any control over at this point.
Okay, and you can't use last year's actual income as this year's potential payment?
No, it changes.
But it, it was decreased several hundred thousand dollars.
Right, we, we got, I mean, depending on the funding from the state, from the federal government, and...
The state's going to be the same, right? Is it about that?
It's about, the basic ed piece is about the same, but not everything else is. Plus, you have to also remember that our overall assessed values declined a little bit, too. So, our local taxes, which are based on the overall assessed values of all the properties in the school district, that overall assessment dropped, right?
Yeah, it goes up and down based upon income, whether you have jobs, or don't have jobs, what projected income's going to be, so that happens, or something yet, changes. Again, I mean, we, we used to go and build off of prior year, years ago, and this, this Sensen, unfortunately, started zeroing it, pumping it. Because I remember Mr. Bruchek saying, well, you know, we got 1.5 million from this last year, so I expect to be another 100,000, and Mrs. Sensen doesn't do that, she says it's an actual roundup of numbers.
Okay, but you know for sure there's barriers going to be, I think there was seven or nine hundred thousand dollars decrease in income, I hear you said a 40, 400 and 44 million dollar income this year?
You're asking me to pull up numbers I don't have at my fingertips.
A little bit over 30 million.
What, where are you going with this? Maybe I can answer the question that way, because I don't have all those numbers at my fingertips right now, last year's budget versus this year's budget.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure that there's, I guess what my, my question was, you can't use, because this is just projected, I think, coming...
No, so, this is pretty basic math, so, the state has come out and said, this is how much money we're going to give you. Federal government says, this is how much we're going to give you. And we take a look at our overall tax mileage, assessed values, right, for the entire community, that's all local income, and you multiply that by the mileage rate, and boom, there's the balance of our income. It's those three pieces, for the most part. Now, granted, there's some Title I funding, and, and, you know, some grant money that we get, but it's the minimus compared to the overall budget. The lion's share comes from local taxes, and, and that is based on the overall mileage in our tax rate.
Okay.
Okay.
Did you hear it, Paul? Mr. Poole, the key word here, our governor, that's exactly what we needed, our governor put us here, let's replace our governor, and then start our office, put me up, and our district chairs about educating our children again, because apparently, this was another time.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Adjourn in a second.
Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.